Monday, February 10th, regular Board of Education meeting to order. Dylan, would you call the roll, please?
Nikki Austin, absent. Jim Curran, also absent. Judge Dupree.
Present.
Eric Ecto, present. Mike Prosser, here.
Teresa Keen.
Present.
Dylan McGuire, I am present.
Terry Montgomery.
Present.
And Phil Bospor.
Present.
We have a quorum. We are in session. Entertain a motion to approve the agenda for this evening.
Second.
A motion by Eric and a second by Terry. By voice vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. All right, next item on the agenda is our recognitions. So we get to have a little bit of fun tonight. We're excited to welcome you all here to talk about some of the great things that our kids and our staff are doing. So this evening, we're going to start off with Northside Elementary. We'll start with.
Northside is so excited to announce this month's recipient, and that is Alita Schremer. First of all, before I let Mr. Barnard talk about what amazing student she is, I just want to say that I'm so glad that you're getting this award before you leave Northside because your leadership, your positive light, all throughout, while you've been at Northside, you've just been such a role model. And you are just, you're the person I want to put on the pedestal. And like, this is what you need to strive for. You're just an amazing human. We're going to miss you a lot next year. And I can't wait to hear what happens as you go through middle school and high school. You're going to do great things.
All right, so she's.
Love her.
I was in second grade when I first met you, and I knew then the person that you were, and you haven't changed a bit. You always look to like how you can help others before you even think of yourself every single day. You're driven, you're caring, you're so devoted to like the school and everything about it. And I think you're going to do amazing things. And Monroe girls' basketball is going to be really good coming up.
Really good.
Yeah, it's just been a pleasure to be your teacher, and you're one of those special kids that, you know, teachers will always remember. So congratulations, you deserve this so much.
She wants to make a speech?
Absolutely. That's cruel.
We joked about it. I told her I was joking.
Mrs. Zimmerman is not very nice to you. It tells me that you have a great sense of humor, too. And you didn't even blush that bad when you did that. It was a great job. Super excited to hear that, you know, they're so sad to lose you, and I'm sure our middle school staff is very, very excited to have you come in that way. So in honor of your achievement, we've got a certificate to recognize the achievement and a gift card to Barnes &amp; Noble. So congratulations. Move on to Parkside Elementary.
Good evening, everyone. I'm excited to introduce Shambri to everyone tonight. Shambri is a fifth grader at Parkside, and I've had the privilege of knowing Shambri since she was in 4K at Abraham Lincoln. And even with very young 4K age children, you can tell who the leaders are in the classroom, who other kids look to when they need to know what to do, and who the teachers are at parent-teacher conferences, even in 4K, that they say, she's a role model for others. And that's always been you, Shambri. And as you've gotten older, you've developed an incredible sense of confidence and, most recently, stage presence. Shambri is very theatrical and incredibly, incredibly talented, and has done some youth theater as well as some adult productions in our community. And I look forward to seeing your name in lights, you on stage, whatever it is you decide to accomplish. You will do amazing things, Shambri. So Ms. Duffy wants to talk about why she nominated you.
Yeah, so in the classroom, Shambri is a really good role model for her, all of her peers. She's constantly paying attention. She's just a very studious student and always raising her hand, and I just love that, right? Like, you want to see participation, and she is a great participant. So I just, she's been well-deserving of this award for her entire elementary career. And so earlier today, all of the teachers that she had prior were very excited that you had this award given to you this year. So congratulations, Shambri.
I'm Phil with the Board of Education. So your principal and teacher talked about leadership and creativity, and I'm sure they're really proud of you. We are, as a board, very proud of you. Keep up the great work, and I guess on to middle school next year. So they'll be glad to have you, I'm sure. So keep up the great work. So to memorize tonight, we have a certificate for you to Barnes &amp; Noble for a book that you would like to get and then a certificate recognizing tonight. Congratulations, great job.
All right, move on to middle school next.
So the middle school is really excited to present our award for this month's recipient of the Student of the Month to Azalia Richard. This award in the middle school isn't typically given to sixth graders, especially in the middle of the year. So just so, I want you to know, this is a pretty big deal for a sixth grader. Over the last two and a half years, we've given the award to one sixth grader, and that was at the end of the year for showing growth throughout. So it's a really big honor for you. I'm really excited you're here. Ms. Johnson's got some amazing things to share.
So when we were trying to come up with students to nominate, everybody on our sixth grade team were like, yes, Azalia is the one. So many positive things that we all could say. It's like, she is such a hard worker. Everybody wants to work with her because she has this presence that allows everybody to flourish. And so we are so proud of you here at Monroe Middle School. And so I'm like, I was thinking about writing down names for the other elementary fifth grade students coming up, you know, to see how they stack up compared to. Congratulations. You're welcome.
Azalia, I'm Teresa with the board, and I am so, so excited to give this to you. I get to know you inside and outside of the classroom, and I would say you are beyond deserving of this award. So you are a fantastic choice. And what do we say? You can control.
Our effort and our attitude.
And I think that describes you, right? Your effort is always 110%. You're always striving to do your best. You keep trying to make sure you excel at what you do, always, in everything you do. And your attitude, like Mrs. Johnson said, is always positive. You show a kind smile. You're the type of person that other people want to be around, and that's amazing. And your school and our community is better because of you. So I'm excited to give this to you. So you get an award, a certificate, and a gift card to Barnes &amp; Noble.
Move on to high school. Yeah.
All right, Monroe High School has two tonight because our Jack Tran is a junior at Monroe High School. He's our December Student of the Month. Couldn't be here last month to be recognized because he was at the Dorian Festival. Both of you were, right?
Yep.
At Luther College, is that where?
Yeah, it's about a thousand singers, so he's one of, he has a thousand nominees, so.
So I guess they chose that over us, but. We'll let you have that one. But Jack was nominated as Student of the Month by Mr. Lentz. Jack is an extremely talented young man. I understand he's in a band outside of school. I have not been able to check it out yet. Don't know if I'm.
Wait long enough, he will plug it.
Yeah, we'll be around.
Okay.
See that sometime. But he's really been taking more and more of a leadership role in the school, and I think that's what Mr. Lentz will talk a little bit about as well.
Yeah, so the main thing I want to talk about is the first time I met Jack. So those of you who don't know, we do a summer school musical every year for third through fifth graders. I met Jack as a quite shorter fourth grader for Lion King Kids. And what stood out to me is generally we do a full day of summer school, and then they come to us. So as you can imagine, only schools a little bit squirrely at that moment. He was completely responsible, mature, passion, effort, all those good things, and really stood out. And that has only blossomed as he's grown into this wonderfully young man. He's the lifeblood of our choir. We do not really succeed without him. He advocates for others. What you don't often see in people is talented. So this is a state-level solo ensemble, multi-talented musician. What you don't often see is someone who has more character than talent. And I would say that 100%, so, yeah.
Yeah, I'm Eric Ecto with the board. I've seen you last three years after the holiday. You do a great job with the jazz bands, too. You're a great drummer, too. And you do a great job with the kids and your jokes. I got a certificate to remember in the evening and a gift certificate to Barnes &amp; Noble.
Congratulations.
All right. Mr. Lynch and Ms. Carper. So Tony Wolf is the Student of the Month for January for Monroe High School, nominated by Ms. Carper and Mr. Lynch. Tony has really, I think, blossomed in the last year, year and a half by getting involved in our launch program with our home remodeling, home build, as well as youth apprenticeship now that he's in with CG Schmidt, right? Out at building at our new high school. So like, he has really, really blossomed. I think one of my favorite stories with Tony is every year we do, like, let's say, testing for ACT. And I don't know that that is always Tony's jam. So I pull in students who don't really, they're like, maybe don't do much on the test. And I kind of confront them and say, hey, are you really going to, I need you to try on this. And I think that hit Tony wrong because he actually got really mad that I like called him out on that, I think. But then after that, you kind of went like, I'll show him, right? And he grew like six points on his ACT, which was awesome. And I think now you're seeing that tough nose, not only on the football field, but in your workplaces, is really showing up, so. Thanks for doing that. I'm sorry, I didn't seal too much of what you guys said, but I'll let you guys talk about it here. Tony Wolf is a senior. He's one of 16 students that were building a house in about 260 hours with 16 people who have never done it before, no pressure at all. No, but I got to know Tony last year when he was part of the launch program, the skill building trades for renovating the house. Saw the character, saw the quality, saw all the right stuff. And so now this year, we're really seeing it come out in every measurable way. He excels. He excels in his character, his competence, he's a quick learner. He leads by example. He just, he sees something that needs to be done, he does it. And the other students are like, you know, they like look for a place to hide. He gets the job done, and so he's just a great example. And Ms. Carper will talk a little bit more about where that's going with all him, but I'm just so proud of him. We're going to get this job done, right? Lord willing, the creek don't rise because of guys like Tony. And so I'm really, really, really grateful to know him and see him excel at all he does. And he's going to have a great future as he continues with some form of the trades.
Yep.
And unlike Mr. Jackson and Mr. Lynch, I don't really know Tony very well. But I do know the impact that he has on other students. He truly is a leader. So the people that I talk to, they talk about working with Tony at the house. They talk about, again, we hear from Mr. Lentz about what a good leader he is at the house. I hear about students who decide to do a youth apprenticeship because Tony is doing a youth apprenticeship, and he talks about it. I hear from students who decide to do launch, any kind of any strand. Tony actually got out of his comfort zone a little bit and did the video, the promotional video for launch. He also, if you're watching Facebook on the Home Construction Cooperative, he's in those videos, too. So again, we've really seen him step out. Also in talking with his employer at CG Schmidt. So again, he's building our new high school. That's pretty awesome. And talking to his employer, and can I share the news that you shared with me? So Tony's going to school, to UW-Plattville for construction management, and CG Schmidt has asked him to stay on at their Madison office as an intern.
Great, thanks. Nope, sorry. We got Mr. Dupree. Tony, just amazing to hear perseverance, flexibility, leading by example, and really inspiring other students to follow in your footsteps, which at the beginning of this program that you're building, right along with your fellow students and teachers, you're creating a pathway that other people can see opportunity in. And that's huge. I can't tell you what ripple effect that's going to have for our community and for the schools. So from the Board of Education, we thank you so very much for being committed to that work and to doing your best every single day. We've got a certificate to honor the occasion and a gift card to Barnes &amp; Noble for you.
Make a job. Thank you.
All right, I'll just stay up here. So the district school district of Monroe Staff Excellence Award winner for January is Ms. Carolyn Schultz. English teacher at Monroe High School. Ms. Carey, do you want to come, too? Okay. Super, super glad that Carolyn can get this award. She works really, really hard in and out of the classroom to support all of our students. One of the things I would say about Carolyn, and I hope I'm not taking too much of this, is that she, she isn't somebody that I really have to tell exactly what to do all the time. She's someone that sees problems, seeks out solutions, goes and finds what needs to be done, and does it on behalf of her students in her classroom and also outside of her classroom. I'm really happy that one of her, actually collaborative team partner this year, was honored as well as one of our Staff Excellence Award winners. And it's no secret to me that the secret that they have is they work really, really well together. And that shows in what they produce in the classroom and what the students get as an experience. So I'm super happy about that as someone who gets to work alongside them and sees the work that they do. And that's just the classroom. There's so many more things that you do with forensics and supporting some of our groups of students who don't always get the most support and need to get more support, so I really, really appreciate that.
I nominated Carolyn. I have the unique experience of not only working with her as a special ed teacher, having her help some of my students. And she's always willing to let us know when there's a problem before it's even a problem. And we're solving it ahead of time, so I appreciate that. She's also working with our multi-language learners and with some of our gifted and talented kids. And then I also have the joy of having my kids in her class. And I have to say, after she had my oldest son, he had to write an essay for something else, and he had me check it. And I texted her, and I'm like, holy crap, Carolyn, he can write! And I definitely saw a huge, huge, huge just improvement in his writing skills after he had her. And so that was, it meant a lot to me. And now she has my younger son, and he, too, is making great strides in his writing, so I appreciate you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Carolyn. I've known Carolyn for a long time. The very first year she came to work here, I got to partner with her and Rachel. They make an awesome team, and she's a fabulous teacher. She's not only, she's your A-type personality, but she has a great sense of humor, which really draws the kids in. But I mean, I can't say enough good about her. We're so lucky to have her and that she gets to partner with Rachel. And we're very, very happy that you got this award. Congratulations.
Thank you.
I'm going to, one more thing. I'm going to take off my parent hat and put on my Optimus hat. And the Optimus have a little gift for you, some neural money to thank you for all you do for the district.
Thank you. I just want to say how lucky I am to make my career here in Monroe. I know that I couldn't do the job that I do without my team of, obviously, my English 9 team, the rest of the English department, and our admin team, who are just so supportive every step of the way. And my students who show up every single day, ready to learn and excited to learn, even though English might not be their favorite subject. We show up and we're ready to have a good time and really put forth the effort every day, and they make my day great every day. So, thank you.
All right, thank you, everybody, for being here with us to help celebrate these moments with all of our award winners. If we could get, if we could get everybody that received an award this evening, come on up to the front. We'll get your picture, and then we'll dismiss everybody. Thank you.
You're right in the front because you're the shortest.
Okay, oh, yeah.
It's you or just the kids? Two, okay.
Let's not bear to Carolyn to put her right. Somebody's got to say it. Between Jack and Tony.
All right, great. One, two, three. And one more. Perfect, thanks so much, congratulations.
Thanks again, everybody, for being here with us this evening. If you'd like to stick around for a nice, long meeting, you can hang out. Otherwise, you're free to go. Thank you.
Good job, Alex.
Move on to our consent agenda. Any board members wish to have any individual item removed from the consent agenda for consideration? Okay, read them into the record. We're approving the minutes for the Board of Education meeting from January 27th, 2025. Approval and acceptance of community donations, 1,400 pounds of mixed steel for practice welding, three rolls of welding wire, and four pieces of square tube to the Monroe High School by Coon Agricultural Machinery Manufacturer. Several bags of new clothing and shoes to the school district health offices by Cynthia Vagely. Backpack buddies received $3,000 from the Monroe Optimus Club Incorporated, $100 from Michael and Mary Ann Krebs, $100 from Nancy Slim Day, $100 from David Bennett, $50 from Donald and Bonnie Barker, $50 from my dental agency. Approval of professional staff resignations, Caitlin Fochet, school counselor in Northside Elementary School, Katie Johnson, special education teacher at Monroe Middle School. Approval of support staff resignation, Elizabeth Babell, accounting secretary at Monroe Middle School. Again, can't thank the community enough for their supportive backpack buddies. Makes a difference for those children taking advantage of it every day. Entertain a motion. Motion by Terry and second by Teresa. By voice vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is public comment. I have nobody signed in for public comment. No old business, and we are on to new business. So the item before us this evening is for action. Administration's recommendation is attached to our packets. I'll turn it over to Jeremy to do this little overview.
So I have a presentation to the, Cara. We're doing the early college credit program.
Sorry.
This is easy. She wants to take two classes online at UW Madison. She should do it. There you go. See, I was direction.
Any questions? Entertain a motion.
So moved.
A motion by Terry and a second by Mike to approve the early college credit program application request for Sophia Wu, as recommended by Jeremy Jackson, high school principal. By voice vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Now, I'm excited to discuss our next item. It's before the board for action tonight, and this is an opportunity through the work advocacy cooperation of GCDC, Area, CD Business Partners, our hardworking administrative staff, and the school districts of Monroe, Broadhead, New Claris, Albany, Judah, and Monticello to create career and technical education opportunities for all of the high school students in Green County. This is huge. So Mr. Jackson, Ms. Carper.
A lot of this is thanks to Cara and Olivia at GCDC and pushing me to think bigger and bigger, which is scary. I've said that to you before, when Cara comes to me with some ideas. But this one makes a ton of sense. So big picture, we got the grant for $2 million from the Wisconsin Department Administration. 1.5 million went to adding square footage to the CTE wing at the new high school. And then there's about $500,000 left over. And one of the goals that GCDC has is to have not just students in Monroe, but students in the county and all the districts that you just mentioned have the ability to access some of these programs and use these facilities. We weren't sure quite how we would do that, so we started coming up with different ideas. And this is where you'll probably need to go with me on this one because there's a lot of, a lot to it, but we think we can pull this off. With the $500,000, let me go to the next one there. What we're proposing doing is expanding our launch, skill building trades, and then adding another launch strand in manufacturing. What this would do is we'd have two home builds. One would be a construction remodel in the morning, and then one would be a full home build like we're doing now this year. So that would allow, instead of 16 students, which is what we have in our full home build now, we would be up to 32 students. So same classes, we would hold it one morning and the afternoon, or one morning, first, second hour in flex, and then the afternoon, fourth, fifth hour in flex. So we are building like prerequisite skills and onboarding and vetting of the different students to get in there, thinking more seniors than juniors for the actual full home build, and then more juniors and people who are less skilled in the home remodel because it's a little bit easier to teach them how to do things in a remodel than it is in a full home build. Like I said, 32 spots available. We are going to be meeting with different county schools to see what their level of interest is in this. We have a little bit of that, but we want to kind of break it out on who, how many they have, how would you get them here? How would you get them with their prerequisite skills, like the light building stuff that we have? Our initial talks with them have all been really, really good, really, really supportive, so I think that we can pull this off. I should back up a little bit. We had two roundtable discussions in Monroe. First one with all of the building, construction, and skilled trades people, as well as the school districts of Green County, talking about, are we hitting the mark with our skilled building trades? In what you want as far as a worker, they were, I would say, over the moon. They really are loving what we're doing with this program. We actually found out from them that our kiddos, you know, Mr. Lynch talked about Tony being the leader and some kids kind of hiding. We have way more leaders than we found out on their actual crews that are getting paid, is what they're saying sometimes. I'm sure that was some in jest, but they're saying, you guys are doing great if you're getting five or six leaders out of your 16 that are on the project. But that was really good, and they were super supportive. Really, anything we need, basically, is what they said as far as expanding this out through the county because they're actually getting people that are going right into their trades and right into their construction businesses from this program already. So then, the week after that, we had a roundtable with the manufacturing industries in Green County, as well as the different schools. And for there, that was a little bit different. It was talking about what do you need as far as from us, schools, as workers, and that pipeline of skills? And what, really, what do they want from us? And what we continually hear is they want us to give them kids with soft skills. Is that basically what it is? I mean, most of those places will train them, but they want really our kiddos to be able to understand what it's like to be part of a team, what it's like to communicate, what it's like to be on time. what it's like to be on time, what it's like to work hard and take initiative, all that kind of stuff. So they were super, super interested in, and we'll talk about this in a minute here, the building of a manufacturing type program that mimicked the house build. So that's what we really are looking to do, is use our advanced manufacturing class along with entrepreneurship and business class to create, we haven't, have we landed on a name?
Applied Manufacturing and Entrepreneurship.
So really what that would do is get our kiddos working directly with the businesses in town and then Green County. And not only just, you know, designing and fabricating and manufacturing parts, it'd be actual parts that these businesses have. And then they would, they would actually pay us at a piece rate for the, for these parts. I can go, I was talking around this, sorry Cara. I've talked about this a lot, so if I don't go word for word, that's okay. Talked about the home build, talked about the remodel, okay. Manufacturing. So, the first year, we want to have only a pilot program. So it'd be just Monroe students, it'd be one hour and a flex.
Which slide do you want to?
Number seven. It wasn't working for me. There we go. So, oh, next one, manufacturing one. There you go. There you go, yep. So one hour flex pilot program, and then expanding to the, when we get into the new school, to two hours and a flex, and open to all Green County students in that one. So again, looking at advanced metals, looking at manufacturing entrepreneurship, and then the lower level courses of metals, one or welding one as prerequisite skills getting in there. This kind of explains a little bit more about it, but like I said before, working with the two big ones, actually, there were a whole lot of them there at the manufacturing roundtable, but Monroe Truck and Coon Knight are really on to this. They said whatever, basically whatever we need, we're in on this because they'd like to get this going, to get a pipeline of workers and skilled workers to their businesses. So here's what we project for, as far as students, when we get into the second year of it, where we have students from other other districts. So obviously Monroe would have the most because we have the most students in the district. We're projecting Broadhead two, Nukleris two, Albany one, Judah one, Monticello one. Just projections, though, we don't really know what those districts would have, and I don't think we would hold. Like if they had, let's say Broadhead had three, Nukleris had one, let's do that, let's get the kids the opportunities that want to be here. The big, I guess the big takeaway from all of this is in order to do this, and here's where the big ask is, and I understand this is difficult in a time that we're in right now budget-wise, is we would need to hire one full-time CTE teacher for the 25, 26 school year and beyond. Their responsibilities would be to, in order to pull this off, cover the introductory welding and metal courses, and then depending on who we hire, possibly cover that home, the home remodel that we're going to be doing in the morning. What we've worked out, though, is because, remember I talked about we have that $500,000 left, is that grant would pay for this instructor fully, at no cost to the district, for at least the first three years. And then we're going to be looking at, like you said, the business side of this would be getting paid or reimbursed from the businesses that we work with for the parts that we're making. So we project that we can make this sustainable by doing that with no cost to the district. Now, we know that's work and that's on us to be able to do that. And we may, it may take some time, so it may go from three years fully funded to maybe we don't get the full amount the next year, but it'll be certainly enough after three years to go a fourth year, a fifth year. So that is our plan, and we know this can work. There is a, there is a district in Northern Wisconsin called Leva Stroh that does this, and they make about $80,000 a year off of just their, and they're way smaller than us, off of just their program just like this. So it can be done. I think it would be hugely beneficial to the community, to the county. And then part of our work, I guess, with the other school districts is, alright, if it's close, and we see this is super valuable, we know it can't be an add to our district or really any district, how do we make this work? Could the other districts help us out in funding a position that everybody's going to be accessing that? So we really think we have a lot of work ahead of us, but we really think that, you know, the benefits of this are going to be amazing to be able to have a launch strand that is a business working with our factories and manufacturing sector in Green County and in Monroe. So that's what we are proposing.
I have a question, but first a comment or we?
Yeah, go for it.
Sorry, Rich, thank you. First of all, I'm super impressed because it wasn't too long ago that as a district, we were hearing from our businesses in the community, what can we as a district do to develop kids for the trades that are ready to work when they leave school? Cara came on board and yet has just done this, and just, I'm super impressed. Jeremy, thank you. GCDC, I think, has been a great partner. I think the community businesses will be partners and will grow as partners. So great, I mean, this is just super.
Olivia might have wanted to be here tonight, by the way, but she had another meeting, and she just wanted to reassure everybody that absolutely this is the grant money that we have, this is what it's for, this is what we want. This is their goal too, so we're all reassured that we're not stuck holding that.
You just tell her that she's super impressive too then. And then I did have a question too. The Yosha 10 that's required for the building strand, is that something that the kids can get through school then?
It's online, it's about, what is it, 13 hour?
Yeah, it's a, it takes about 13 hours, it's a 10-hour videos.
Safety program.
They can do it.
And it's cost $35 per student.
Yep, we're facilitating that.
We use that as one of the prerequisites, so in order to gain interest and put a little skin in the game for them, they do it either in the summer or before this, the previous school year gets out.
Yeah, I also have the opportunity to see this at the technical college level, this need for manufacturing. And this is fantastic in Green County for school district of Monroe to be that collaborative glue that's going to pull of these districts together to provide that opportunity for these kids that our business partners are clamoring for. And they're great quality jobs, they're fantastic jobs. And we need, we need folks that are excited about doing them, and I think that this opportunity is going to do exactly that. So thank you so much for everybody involved, Cara and your team and Olivia at GCDC to make this happen. I believe, is this the first, is this the first time that we've proposed a collaboration with every district in the county?
That I know of, yeah. Other than sports, maybe, I don't know.
Certainly, I don't recall any kind of partnership of this size or magnitude. I think it's pretty significant. And as Jeremy said, we'll, we'll see to what extent the other districts want to sign on, but the early meetings have been very promising. And I would just say overall, whether it be other school districts, whether it be construction trades, manufacturing, this is about as good of a PR move as we can make right now. And not that we're doing this for PR value, but I think it just speaks to how incredibly excited this community is about this kind of programming being a part of our high school.
There was not one person in either of those rooms that wasn't excited about it, that didn't have good things to say and wanted to get involved. So that was super cool to see. I, we, like I said, we've, we've got a lot of work to do. We don't want to necessarily lay that out all here, but like MOUs and contracts, making sure that the district is, is not, you know, responsible for financially or anything like that. We just want to make sure that this is all set up right and done right, and make sure that everybody's covered. But we can do that. It's been done before. There's other models out there, and GCDC is very willing to work with us as well as the businesses. And I think once we get going, it's going to be one of those programs, just like the building trades, that people are going to want to get into.
And just, just to clarify again too, so this is, this is a net neutral cost, this is a zero cost to the district being proposed. The initial three years is being funded by the grant that has to be used to further CTE in the district and at Monroe High School. It's the only thing those dollars can be used for. And you guys are developing plans for it to be self-sustaining into the future, either through those products or through collaborations or MOUs with other districts.
Yeah, that was one of the things we really, really wanted to be sensitive to because we know the bunch of concerns we're in right now, and some may say, well, how could you possibly do this at the same time that we're reducing in other areas? And I really wish we had grants in every area and plans to make a lot of positions sustainable and self-funded. But this opportunity doesn't come around very often, and it gives us the ability to provide more opportunities to our students at the same time that we may be reducing in some other areas.
Great job on the grant, I mean, you know, it was no small task. Very competitive.
Cara really does deserve a ton of credit there. And Olivia as well, it's a great partnership, but Cara's very modest and, you know, Cara deserves a lot of the credit. And actually, I think the board and the district deserves a lot of credit because I can remember Todd, Jeremy, and I sitting at a table during in-service thinking about how we could possibly get this, this position going. And what we didn't realize is we were going to get this person right here to come in, and it took everything that we were thinking and amplified it times 100. And we're just very fortunate to have Cara and all of her energy, even though it pushes us sometimes, but the reason we're here is largely because of Cara Harper.
Yeah, not only the programs and the partnerships, but I mean, like Tony's story tonight, that is just unbelievable.
Incredible.
And he's not the only one.
Yeah.
Plenty, I mean, PDC talked when we did the skilled building trades roundtable about they hire about 75% of all their ways and they take a ton of weights. So, I mean, that's a, that's a great percentage to get right into the, it's right into town. If you was in our local economy, that's awesome.
I just want to say, I appreciate the work you guys are doing. I appreciate the way you're asking also, you know, acknowledging that, yeah, it's a net zero right now, but it's a ton of work, which, which means there's also some risk there. Because it is, it's going to be a ton of work to set up and measure success and make sure that you're growing it to that sustainability. And based on, on what you guys have done already, I have complete confidence that you can do that, so.
It's going to be our job to prove it.
And we're going to continue to hold those meetings with, with our industry leaders quarterly. So again, they'll always be checking, always be, again, we've talked, we press them a little bit for measurements, and it's, it's hard, but we're, we'll figure it out.
Any other questions or comments from board members? Okay. Hearing them, then entertain a motion, and the motion we'd be making is to not only approve the hiring of a new CTE teacher, but also to approve the two launch programs that Mr. Jackson talked about as presented of being added to the curriculum for the districts. Somebody would like to make that motion?
Quick, can I clarify? Is applied, is applied manufacturing already a class or manufacturing entrepreneurship?
Yes, there, but there are already both classes that we already offer.
Sorry, okay, so it's not one we have to, that, just the launch strands?
Yeah, just the strands themselves or those classes that we already offer, just like our other strands are going to be put into a launch strand.
I will make that motion.
Okay. Got a motion by Phil and a second by Mike. The motion is to approve the addition of one full-time career and technical education teacher and additions to the launch program as presented pending the confirmation of funding from the Wisconsin Department of Administration non-state grant to be facilitated by Green County Development Corporation as recommended by Jeremy Jackson, high school principal. Questions before we vote? By voice vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Thank you. Good job, guys.
Alright. Next item on the agenda is our MHS building project updates. Construction is really starting to accelerate. You can see that building kind of coming up out of the ground as you drive past it on 11, and that's fantastic. February update is attached to our packets, as long, as well as a drone flight. And those will be made available on the district website here. I don't know, Joe, if you want to talk about the update at all and what we're going to do with those details?
Sure, Ron was going to provide the update, but he's not feeling well today. So I'll do my best to hit the, the main points. In my new role, I'm just getting up to speed with this project, and I'm learning a lot. But it's really exciting to see it all come together. As Rich just said, you can really start to see the, the shape and the shell of the building as it's coming up. They've done a lot of work, particularly with the gymnasium fieldhouse area. You can see the footprint of that rise out of the ground. It's, it's going to be a large, large area. It's going to be really nice. They're doing a lot of work with in-wall electrical and plumbing rough ends. They're forming the auditorium foundations and footings right now. So over the next month, we're going to start to see what is considered one of the more prominent parts of the building rise up. And you're going to, probably in a month to a month and a half, as you're driving on the highway, you're going to get a real sense of the scale of the building. So that's really exciting. They're doing some blasting on the football field to get that ready. And then they're going to just continue to start putting some of the steel joists and decking up. They're doing that in the administration area. And the classroom areas are starting to come along, and they're really forming up that long corridor that'll make up our new M-room. And that's all coming together as well. So a lot of work. There's also some interior design work that's going on. We're looking at a variety of options. I will say, the, the design for the arch placement on our new campus is, I think, breathtaking. It's going to be, it's going to be really beautiful. And so we're excited to share some of that. And there's a lot of budget work that's going on to make sure that we can realize savings whenever possible. So a lot of good work going on right now. It looks like we're, we're in really good shape budget-wise. There'll be a full update at our next meeting. We will have CG Schmidt, Huffman Keel here to talk about a number of things and be available for, for questions from the board. But we're in good shape, and I think the weather has allowed them to progress nicely.
Joe, is the ownership rep in giving you what you need?
They have. They've, they've been great. Last week was a busy week with a lot of meetings. As I said, I'm, I'm learning a lot. I had a lengthy conversation about electrical hooks where I learned quite a bit about, you know, apparently we could learn, we could save $17,500 by having electrical hooks that weren't connected. So we said, yeah, that sounds good. We'll save the 17 grand on that. But they, they've been great, yeah. Every, every meeting has been helpful. They're willing to take the time with me to make sure that I'm up to speed. And then obviously, we're so fortunate to have Ron, who's gone through this process a couple of times already. So I think everyone feels good about where we're at right now.
I would say too that the kids are going to see, February 21st, two classrooms are going to be outfitted as pilot classrooms with furniture. So that'll be coming up pretty soon to a different variety of desks and chairs and tables. And they really want us to put them through the wringer and tell them what they like and what they don't like. So we get the right stuff in the real building.
The only other thing I'd add, as I mentioned this, I think to Rich and Teresa, I'd like to figure out a time to offer the board an opportunity to come out and take a tour of the site so you can see what's going on, as well as maybe some others that have been associated with the project, so people can see what it actually looks like. So I'll work with Chandra, and we'll, we'll see if we can figure out schedules and put together some potential dates and make that happen because I'm sure you all would like to, to see what's going on on the site.
Do you want to run the, I think we have a drone video. Do you want to run through the drone video? Anything else?
No, I think we're we're good. Thank you.
All right. Next, we're gonna move on to the next item on the agenda. It's the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six budget reduction plan. So this item's in front of the board as information this evening. It's continuation of ongoing discussions to identify budget reductions caused by a combination of underfunding from state legislators and the impact of the failed November referendum. Last meeting, we took action to direct administration to reduce the operating budget by one million dollars for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. And tonight, we asked the administration to provide to the board an open session with further details around their finalized plan to meet that directive. So turn it over to Joe, team, to walk us through the presentation and any context they have prepared for us.
Great. Todd, are you on the clicker?
I am.
All right, this is exciting. Thanks, Todd. So Rich, that's a great summary to get us started. Really, what we wanna do to tonight is a couple of things. One, fill in the details on a couple of things that we didn't provide specifics for in our last meeting because we had some communication work to do relative to our staff and the people impacted by the reductions. And then the other part of this presentation is we wanted to attempt to answer some questions relative to why certain position groups are looked at versus others, and we felt it was important to provide some background information so people have that information. So what you see here is what Rich just said. Got a situation with Wisconsin public school funding that has really put us in a position where with revenue limits, it really does limit the amount of operating property tax and general aid that we can collect. Those limits don't always keep pace with inflation, and as a result of the revenue limits, along with some declining enrollment penalties, we end up being in a situation where we truly do lag behind our needs relative to inflation. As a result, we have to depend on operating referendum, as Rich also mentioned and everyone's very familiar with. In November, we did not pass the referendum. The community said no, and that basically constituted an end of eight years of non-recurring funding to the tune of about one point five million dollars annually. So puts us in a position where we needed to make some reductions. We take a look at the next slide. Rich touched on this as well. Wanted to be clear about how this this process worked out. It was the board's decision to determine the amount of the reduction, and they did that at our last meeting on January twenty-seventh, when they approved the one million dollar operating budget reduction. And then it's administration's job to identify the actual plan, and that's a plan that we've been working on for several months. It's a job that we take very seriously. Excuse me. And as we had those conversations, they were tough conversations, sometimes they were emotional conversations, but ultimately, what we were trying to do is make sure that we were prioritizing kids and the classrooms and making sure that it had the least impact possible on our students, and we feel that we did that to the best of our ability. When we look at at some of this, we have to look at a number of things, which include enrollment trends, current resources, upcoming needs, but we also look at staffing comparisons, and that's really something that we wanted to touch on quickly tonight. So the district is fortunate enough to have access to a program called Forecast Five. And what Forecast Five does is takes all of the the data from school districts across the state of Wisconsin, and it makes it available to us. And what this does is it puts us in a position to make comparisons of how we staff our district relative to other districts. And what we did was we looked at, we looked at a number of different areas, but for our presentation tonight, there's four employee groups that we wanted to talk about, those being administration, support staff, pupil services, and teachers. And so what we did is through the system, we identified a set of parameters, and you'll see along the top there, we use three different parameters: enrollment, low-income percentage, and English language learners' percentage. And basically, what we did is we tried to identify the districts that were very much like us demographically. And by setting those parameters, we were able to come up with twenty-one districts plus Monroe, making the comparison set twenty-two districts. And using this information, we can say, all right, here are districts that are relatively similar to us. Let's look at how we staff our district versus how other districts staff themselves. And the purpose of that is to say, do we have any any outliers in a particular group? If we do, and spoiler alert, over the years, we have seen that we have had an area that was slightly out of whack, that's a good indication as to where we need to look in terms of making staffing adjustments. Make sense? So what I wanna do here is use this slide to explain the visual. We'll get into the details of what this one actually says in a minute, but what I wanna do is make sure that people are understanding what we're looking at because there is a lot going on here. The other thing I should say before-
You can stand up and point?
I think I'm gonna stand up and point, Rich, if you don't mind. It's exciting. I got a new sport coat on, so I might as well put it to use, like, I see what's going on here. So Roger, I knew you'd like the sport coat. All right. So what we have here with this data set is this is data from the spring of twenty twenty-four. So Forecast Five usually updates its data set in the spring. So we don't have data for this current year yet. We will get that. But what we wanted to do is represent the data that we do have, and then what we have with the bold red line represents where we would be in the relative ranking when we apply all of the reductions that happened last year. So not what we're talking about in this current round for next year, it's the nine hundred thousand that we reduced last year. You'll see three columns right here. So on the left, there's the full-time equivalency. In other words, how many people are employed within a particular group? You have, to the right, you have the column that talks about the average salary for that employee group, so you can see how much people are making on average within that employee group across the districts. And then the metric that we're using to rank is student per FTE, and that's a very simple metric, but it's one that districts use commonly to get a sense of where they're at. And so what it means is for a particular position group, you take the enrollment of your district and you divide it by the number or the FTE in that particular group, and then you use that to get an idea of how efficient you are in terms of that employee group. So for our purposes, if you're up at the top, that means that you're less efficient, and if you get down towards the bottom, you're considered more efficient with that employee group. Does that make sense? And so people could argue, well, you can look at this two ways. Are you more efficient or does that give you more resources? For our purposes, we're talking about budgets, so we feel it's important to make it clear that we're looking for efficiency because we have a lot of tough decisions to make. And so that's what this visual represents. Please feel free to interrupt me as we go, but we'll we'll go to the next slide, Todd, if you would. So the first group that we're gonna look at is administrators, and it's important to look at them for a couple of reasons. One is it's a question that's often asked, right? And and I will say this, I've been in administration for twenty-five years. It was a question twenty-five years ago when we were having budget talks. It'll likely be a question twenty-five years after I retire, whenever that is. The reason for that is that when you talk about the the group of administrators, you're saying two things. One is that this is the the group that on average has the highest salary, right? They get paid the most, and many people perceive them as being farthest away from the classroom. So I think it's important to say, when people ask that question, there's a reason to ask it. It's a good question, but I think the challenge for people is they don't always have the information to understand how we decide whether or not there's a reduction that needs to be made in that particular area. So as we look at this slide, we're gonna have two slides for the administrator group, and the reason for that is that the way we code Ron as a business manager here is a little bit different from other districts. So in an effort to be completely clear and transparent, we wanted to represent it in a couple of ways. So what we're looking at here is first, how we rank relative to the other twenty-one districts without a business manager. The next slide, we'll factor in Ron and the business managers as well. But what you see is where we're at, based on the twenty twenty-four data and for last or for this year as well, we're right here, which puts us at a sixteenth out of twenty-two districts, meaning we're down towards the bottom third and we're considered more efficient in that area, right? So if you look at this, up at the top is Brown Deer. They would be considered the least efficient with regard to their administrators when you don't have the business manager factored in. Down at the bottom, you have Luxembourg Casco. They're doing more. So where we sit is we're at about two hundred and twenty students per administrator in our district. You rank them, there's a descending sort, and what you see is is what we have there. And again, there was no reduction last year in administration, and that's why the red line is where that's at. Does that make sense? So let's take a look at the next slide when we do add in the business manager slide. So what you'll see here is that when we look at Monroe, you'll find Monroe down here towards the bottom, but what's important to recognize is we included business managers in the set. So I can't manipulate the set in Forecast Five. In other words, I can't say, I want this data to say eleven point oh for our administrators. What's in there is what's in there. So what I did is I used that red line to represent where we would actually be at if Ron's position were coded in here. And what you find is that we're still at sixteenth out of twenty-two districts, right? So we're down towards that bottom third in terms of efficiency, which is a good place to be. I think our board has said relative to the compensation model that we've looked at, you know, we we don't wanna be, on either end, we really wanna sit in the middle because we feel that's an appropriate place to be, given our our district, our community, and what seems fair. And I think this reflects that, that we need to be efficient with our administrative team, and when you look at that student per FTE, I think it represents that. We'll go to the next slide where we're looking at support staff comparison. Now, we don't have the salaries information here because they're not salaried employees, they're hourly employees, but what you'll see here is if you take a look at where we rank as a district, for twenty twenty-four, we were more towards the upper half, right? Not all the way at the top, but we were up here. This is an area where we identified as being maybe a little bit higher-staffed and maybe being more towards an outlier, and that's why we had a significant number of support staff that were cut for last year. I believe it was eight point eight positions, if I'm remembering. Can look at my notes, but I'm pretty sure that's what it is. So we made that reduction, and then once you plug that in, that puts us down here, and that gives us the ranking of fifteenth out of twenty-two. So again, we're down towards the more efficient area for this position group. We were up here, but we made a lot of reductions because we saw that it was probably necessary, given how other districts were staffing, staffing their their schools, and we found that that was an area of potential savings. Not easy cuts to make because those are great people, talented people that do a ton for our kids and for our our staff, but probably necessary, given the information that we have available to us. The next is our pupil services comparison. That's taking a look at your school counselors, your school psychologists, your school nurse. And when you take a look at that, you'll remember last year, we had a lot of conversation about reducing a a school counselor from Abraham Lincoln. That was a tough decision, and this board has always been amazing about providing support for pupil services staff because we know how critically important that work is. But at the end of the of the day, when looking for opportunities for reduction, we were saw, we saw that we're sitting right about in the middle, and then once we reduced one position, that again, took us down to that basically bottom third area, got us about fourteenth out of twenty-two districts. So that again indicates that we're moving towards more efficiency in that area. That's about as low as I would wanna go. I would say you get down here, you start running the risk of not being able to provide all the services that are necessary to keep our kids and our schools safe. The next is the teacher comparison. And what you'll see there is when you look for Monroe, it's right up here for the twenty twenty-four data. We had to make some reductions last year, and that got us down here, which got us to the twelfth out of twenty-two school districts. So again, if you were to say historically where we prioritized our resources, where we put our money, it's really been in the classrooms with with teachers and support staff, and I think this data reflects that. And this shows that we've moved down, we're at about the midpoint right now, which is probably where we need to be, given some of our budget issues, but it also doesn't compromise our ability to teach kids. And I think that demonstrates that we're we're probably prioritizing our dollars the right way in order to make sure that we're taking care of kids. We take a look at this next slide, and this is one that I just added this morning. This basically takes the last four, all four position groups, puts them on one page so you can see the comparison. And as I just said, if you look at how we've prioritized our dollars and our positions, our administration is considered sixteenth, so we're probably most efficient with that group when you look at students per FTE. Support staff is right about there at fifteenth, support staff to fourteenth, I'm sorry, support staff for fifteenth, pupil services for fourteenth, and then teachers at twelfth, and that just gives you a relative scale of where we're at. I think it shows that I think we're in a good place in terms of efficiency. If we had one of these groups that were over here more towards Rich, we would have to say, okay, something seems out of whack. We've gotta do something about that position group and take a look if we can make an adjustment. But what we're seeing is we're we're moving to this area where we probably wanna be somewhere in the the middle, towards the right-hand side of the efficiency line and providing what we need. Okay. So I'm gonna pause for it. Rich, you can come back over now. Thanks for letting me walk around and show off my jacket. Any questions about that? And I know I was going quickly, but there's a lot there to cover. Before we go on to the next part, I guess I'd like to know if the board has any questions about what was provided in that area.
Just some clarity on the the business manager. So we, it's a little bit confusing still. I mean, you talked a little bit about how the comparison, it made sense, this is without Ron, this is with Ron, because we categorize them different, but I don't understand how we categorize him different and and why that is and how that makes it difficult to compare.
I would say it's because Ron's been in the business for a long time, and the way in which he was licensed and was trained is maybe a little bit different than how most are are licensed today. Ron's a fully, fully licensed business administrator, able to do the job, but when we report him, he doesn't get pulled as an administrator in the Forecast Five system. Why exactly that is, I I can't say, and Ron would probably be able to articulate that a little bit better than I would. But the point with the two slides was I didn't want to represent the administration without providing some clarity around why we're at a ten point oh when most people that are paying attention know we have eleven administrators in the district. So that's, I I hope that makes sense, but that's really what it is.
That's what I was missing, that it's a reporting thing in the system that you were using to generate the data.
And and again, we could have represented this in a number of different ways, but if you just go back a slide, Todd, you know, like I said, we'll make this information available. Again, we're gonna put this presentation on on the website so people can take a look. But we included the salary information as well. We, clearly, the community said, we want, we want some information, we want transparency. We're trying to do that every step of the way here to show where we're at because we feel like we really do have a good story to tell. We do feel that we're being efficient. I think you'll you'll see when you look at these groups or these salaries that we're largely right around the the average line there. Sometimes we might be a little bit over, but typically, that's because we we've got some old timers on the administrative team that have been here for a while, and frankly, I think that's that's a good thing because I think it demonstrates their their dedication to the district and it demonstrates a lot of experience, which helps keep great people here because leadership matters, and we gotta, we gotta take care of the folks that are doing the good work with the kids. So thanks for that question, Mike. I'm not hearing any others. Let's go forward, Todd. So let's take a look as we talk about the reduction plan. This is really here to just once again restate the amount of reductions that have happened over the last three years. And I think that's important because even for those of us who have done this work, sitting on the board, been a part of these conversations, when you see it in its totality, it's a bit shocking, right? And really, what you see here is that reductions were made at all of our schools, with the exception of Parkside, but then also at the District Administrative Center, which also has- has an impact on our schools as well. There's a lot of services, support services that are provided at the DAC level that we've had to make reductions on. And the point there is that pretty much everyone has taken a hit. It's been difficult. We've had to tighten our belts. The reason why Parkside probably hasn't is because just through enrollment and some resources, and if we look demographically and the needs that they've had, we've had to make some adjustments there. But overall, this is an incredible list of reductions, and as we said previously, we're saving about $1.5 million annually as a result of all of this work. And then if we get to the reductions for next year, again, these reductions aren't even captured in the data that we just looked at. And one of the questions that someone asked was, well, why don't we represent that on all the visuals that we just provided? I didn't feel comfortable making that leap for our '25, '26 reductions and putting them on top of 2024 data. Once we get that, the spring, we'd be happy to bring that back and show people what it looks like. But ultimately, we're just, again, trying to be as honest and clear about this as we can. So I don't need to read through all of this. We talked about this at our last meeting. The tier-one reductions are there. The new information for the public is really at tier-two. The two support staff reductions that were identified were an elementary LMC aide and a middle school LMC aide. It's very important for me to say that this in no way, shape, or form suggests that those people aren't important, because they are. They're great people, they have great relationships with staff and kids, they do a lot for our schools. Unfortunately, we had to make tough decisions relative to our priorities and looking at some of the information that I just shared. And ultimately, we believe that we can figure out a way to run our LMCs in our schools with those reductions. It will be difficult, but we will make every effort to do so. The other thing is, it's our hope that through attrition and movement that typically happens in a school year, that those individuals will be able to remain as a part of our team should those opportunities arise, because again, they're great people. And then an area of emphasis for tier-three, there were no additional professional staff reductions outside of those realized through attrition in tier-one. And then the last slide, Todd, just basically speaks to the process that we use. We shared this at our last meeting, and I just wanted to represent that everything that we said we were gonna do, we did, and we did on time. After talking to a number of staff members, talking to administration, meeting with union reps at the anchor meeting, we received a lot of praise and support and thanks for doing this in a clear, clearly communicated manner, in an expedited manner, and in a way that was sensitive to the individuals who were pretty anxious about a pretty tough process. So it's not easy, but I feel like the team did a really nice job, given the circumstances, and we probably realized the best outcome we could at this point. So with that, I will stop talking for a minute, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
So programmatically, the only program that right now is falling off is the German language learning program. Is that accurate?
Todd, do you wanna go back a slide so we can just look at everything together? Yeah, so in terms of a program that's going away, yes, that's accurate. I think the others, I mean, the others, when you look at things like summer school transportation, those are services that are going away. But to your point, Mike, that's the only one that really eliminates a program. Todd, am I missing anything with that?
So I know I've had some concerned parents reach out to me, and I thought it would be beneficial to talk about it here. Is there a plan in place to support those students that are in like German III or German IV? Or is that something that because the teachers in the program is going away, we just will not be offering moving forward?
Yeah, I mean, I would say we haven't specifically got into talks around those kids that are in those upper-level German classes, but
For next year, you're talking?
Yeah. Yep. But if there's no resources and staffing available, then obviously they wouldn't receive it through us. We'd have to look at alternative ways to provide that programming, whether it's through Jedi, which is a service we use, at a cost too, right? So
It'd likely be online, if at all, because I think it would be very difficult. It has been very difficult. We do have a plan for the rest of the year, as Ms. Schwartz has taken a different position. We'll be leaving, her last day is this Friday. So we do have a plan for the rest of the year, and we're lucky for that, but it certainly isn't gonna be the same as with Ms. Schwartz. She's been amazing, but we're really lucky to have a plan for the rest of this year going forward. And I think it would've been really, really hard, even if we decided to keep German, to find someone to take that program over.
So I think we're gonna have to do a cost analysis on what we're looking at, and I think part of it is gonna be interest from the kids in continuing in the program. And I think once we have that information, we have a better sense. But there are obviously some virtual options that we can explore, but we've got some work to do in that area to figure out what's next.
So we talked about this at the last meeting, so the CAP students, you've worked that out for them?
Been working with UW Oshkosh to work with our long-term substitute, and they said that they would work with, they don't want the students to lose those opportunities. Still have work to do on that. Oshkosh isn't fully committing to anything at this point, but I think with four days left, I'm hoping that they work with us on that one. Been going since December.
So parents of those students, if they wanna reach out, would they reach out to you or Todd or Jeremy? Who would you like those people to go to?
Me or Jeremy is fine.
And we realize that as with any of these, it's not easy, it's not ideal, for sure. That's just part of the position we're in. Other questions?
So you also said it's possible, depending on through attrition, that the library aides might not lose their jobs?
Well, yes, meaning that, so for example, maybe there's a classroom special education aide position that opens up, and should they choose to apply for that and they were determined to be the best candidate, there might be opportunities for them to continue their employment with the district.
Okay, okay.
It's hard to say.
It's still gonna be tough on how you're gonna staff the library aides to care of that stuff.
Yes, thank you, Terry. To be clear, that's not to suggest that we're bringing the LMC aide positions back, it's more about those individuals.
Okay, that's what I wanted to, thank you.
Any other questions?
Just question, just a comment. For me as a board member, I really appreciate the work that administration has done here, and I appreciate how you brought up upfront, you know, we as a board are a governing board, right? So we've directed administration to make these cuts, and you guys have done the hard works of figuring out how to make that happen. And as a board member, I support the work that you've done there 100%. So I appreciate all that effort, and we as a board support you and the administration, or I do as a board member.
Honestly, thank you. We felt that support as we went, gone through the process this year, and the board has been very clear, which is extremely helpful for us in making some tough decisions. And like I said at the beginning of this, we take this very seriously, and they're tough decisions, but we feel like the plan that was ultimately developed was the right one.
I appreciate your presentation, too. I think those comparison charts were really helpful for me to see.
And like I said, we'll, over the next day or so, a couple of days, we'll work to make that available on the website, so people at home that are interested can take a look.
Sounds good, appreciate that.
Thank you.
All right. No other conversation, we're gonna move on to informational items. Liaison reports, I don't have any communication from VA or Mass. Boardsmanship, just as a note, the second meeting in March is during spring break, so for board members, we will not plan to have that meeting. It's the fourth Monday in March. And then Joe, I think, got some
Yeah, we got a couple of things, some exciting celebrations. So first, received last week from WASB some certificates and pins for board members commemorating their level of service. So I'll just call these out and we'll hand these out. So Dylan McGuire, award level one. Phil Vosberg, level one. Congrats, Phil. Rich, level three. And then Nikki Austin, Nikki's not able to be here, but she's also level three as well, so we'll get that. So I think that just speaks to the level of commitment by our board. As everyone knows, our board doesn't earn a single dollar, and they put in an incredible amount of time, so we're very fortunate to have these folks provide their leadership for the district and the community. One other thing that we have, as long as we're here, many of you are aware that Nikki Austin was one of the board members that attended the WASB convention in Milwaukee, and while there, she won a rather large, rather funky, green and yellow chair. And so Nikki said, I wanna donate that to the district, and her idea was that we do a quick raffle and allow one of our staff members to win the chair. And so we put all those names in a bowl here, and Teresa has agreed to pick one and see who the winner is. So see what you got?
Oh, Patrick Kenny at the high school.
There you go, Patrick. Patrick Kenny is the proud winner of a green and yellow chair. So we'll get that to Patrick this week. That's it for me.
Awesome. Thanks, Joe. We'll go through committee reports. Terry, anything from you?
EIA's meeting, February 13th.
Okay.
Nothing for finance committee, but about a week ago, and I think I might need Sarah's help if she's here. There was an executive producers' invention convention.
Evenvention.
Invention convention. Can you just say a couple of words as to what that was?
Sure, through one of our CKLA units, where they do reading and writing, the students got to create and come up with different inventions that they would have. And so the Eureka presentation that got to go to was an end-of-the-unit time when they invited us in to present their invention and tell us details about it. So it was a culminating sort of at the end.
Yeah, and it was just really cool. Joe, I think you were also a producer. I felt really important.
Putting it on my resume.
But it was just really neat to see, because they had to each make a pitch under invention, and it just, they were really interested in warranties, I know.
I hear what's going on, but it was a thing.
Warranties for like two seconds, some were ten years.
Yes.
And thank you for the thank you card.
And it is worth noting that I believe Northside and Parkside also had their own events. I was able to get over to Parkside's, and the attendance there was incredible.
Over 120 guests.
Yeah. Yeah, it was amazing. And Amy, how was your event?
I didn't do a head count, but it was packed.
Yeah. So again, incredible support from our parents, and we have parents, grandparents, just people that couldn't have been more thrilled.
Great experience for the kids.
Absolutely. That was neat.
Teresa?
Curriculum at tonight, we had a great presentation from the math interventionists and an update on the data at all from K-12 and just the incredible work that they're doing and the things that are happening specifically.
Eric?
I just wanted to mention a few things that are happening in the district that are great. So last time, we should mention, we forgot, the Monroe dance team, I think, took runner-up in regionals and sent some kids on to state. There was a joint band concert between the middle school and the high school that I attended that was amazing. Seven of our high school band members were a part of the Rod Valley Conference Honors Band. We had a teacher win Outstanding Educator, right, from the WAC, Ms. Peterson. She was recognized at a battered basketball game.
Yeah, that's right.
Northside had their sock hop. It looked like a great time. And the boys wrestling team were conference champs.
That's huge.
And then our conference tournament this weekend had, Carson was champ and Othie was champ, and then a bunch of other all-conference.
Great class.
Overall, by luck. That's about it. Regionals are Friday and Saturday, yep, for the state tournaments. That starts Friday.
Good luck. Right, Dylan?
Nothing for me.
Okay. Agenda items for future discussion from board members. Five minutes for the press, I do not see them here. Maintain one final motion, I have page 25.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Eric, second by Terry. All those in favor, by voice votes, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Your turn.